All right, good evening. I call the Planning Commission for August fourth to order at seven oh two P M. Roll call will go Chair Testman on present by Chair Kilkup.
Present.
Commissioner Hurley, present. Commissioner Lambert.
Present.
Commissioner Maruziak.
Present.
And Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
All right, we do have a quorum and that is great. Agenda approval, I move that we move the agenda as written for tonight, August fourth, twenty twenty five as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the agenda is approved. Public comment, only in-person attendees. Do we have comments on the agenda? No? Okay. Looks like there are no other in-person attendees with comments on the agenda. So we'll move on to minutes. Looking at the minutes dated July twenty first, twenty twenty five, I move that we approve those as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
And all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so those are approved as well. New business, none per the written agenda, and that is correct. So we'll move on to old business. Looking at the climate element, goals and policies, Director Davis.
Thank you, Chair Testman, and good evening, Commissioners. Well, here we go again. I am, I made a PowerPoint just to give us some talking points, but hopefully you've had an opportunity to read your packet materials and see the cover memo that I tried to kind of refresh everybody's memories on like where we started with our goals and policies and how, you know, kind of where we ended. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Just because I thought it would be good to have a working document. So I just kind of laid out, wait, how, why is this not, there we go. I just laid out what, basically I just kind of bulleted what I laid out in the memo to you. And just went through the various meetings that we had. And I just wanted to also add that after I sent out that memo, I did find some follow-up notes from Christina at OTAC where she talked about the resilience goals and what was determined at the meeting in June, on June second. So I've, I put those here just so we have some talking points, but what I would like to recommend is that maybe we go back to the June second packet materials and try to just refine what you would like to see for goals and policies based on that meeting. Because I don't have OTAC here, I'm kind of going off of my memory and my notes. And, and I, I did want to mention, like, I know that this came up at the last meeting and I felt like they were doing a great job on the climate element and leading us through the CPAP meetings that I think Chair Testman can probably attest to as well. But I don't know really, like, it seems like the goals and policies kind of went sideways a little bit. And so, and I think that was just having different people try to present the goals and policies between the two separate meetings between May and June. And then, you know, having the CPAP kind of weigh in, that committee weigh in on those and having some opposition to some of the changes that we made. And I just think it created a lot of confusion. So I'm thinking, let's just regroup and we'll go back and we'll try to sort this out together tonight. So I can get a climate element kind of drafted up and then have that ready to go to council once we bring the critical areas ordinance back. And not to jump ahead because I have this in my department report to talk to you about later, but the critical areas ordinance, we're gonna revisit that as I mentioned and go back and look at the best available science around the buffers that were proposed on the streams and the wetlands and those, as well as the flood elevation data. And so I've been working with Jeff Gray at, who's at OTAC as well, but he's at the Redmond office. He's actually gonna go out and reevaluate all of those streams and wetlands to see if those buffers that were recommended actually make sense. Because in some cases, we're dealing with, you know, expanding the buffers from seventy-five feet to two hundred feet, you know, in areas that are already built out, that, you know, in a already developed, recently developed even, housing developments, which is gonna create, I would say could be kind of onerous on a lot of the homeowners. And so we, I talked to Jeff Gray the week before last and I said, maybe we should go back and actually individually evaluate those streams and wetlands and the existing buffers and see how an expanded buffer may or may not be the best available science. And so he's planning to do that work and we'll bring that back at the October sixth meeting, which seems like a long ways away. But September fifteenth is already accounted for and we're taking a recess next for the rest of this month. So I didn't really have a lot of other meetings to get that in there, so. But I still think we can get the climate element and the critical areas ordinance recommendations on to the council and passed this year, which is a good thing. So. Anyway, so I jumped ahead, but let's, let's jump back to the draft goals and policies. And I'm open to suggestions to whatever you think might be easiest. I can certainly pull up the packet material and we can look at the goals that were presented to you on June second. We can go look at the goals on June sixteenth, even though, as I recall, those were not the recommended goals by the Planning Commission. And so I'd be looking for your input on how you would best like to see us go through this process.
Did you go back to the timeline real quick?
Yes.
So, so May nineteenth is when?
So May nineteenth was when Christina
Okay.
Initially came in and talked about the goals and policies. And then on June second, Chris came back and remember we, it was like we were starting all over again, like what happened to the last discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, when we had May nineteenth and he said, well, those needed to be refined further.
He said, too many, compress them.
Yeah.
You guys really need to compress them.
Yes.
Yeah.
So then we did all that work. We had a really long meeting that night. And then on June fifth, we went to the CPAT group that is the policy advisory team, climate policy advisory team that both myself and Chair Testman were part of, though you had missed that meeting because you were in another meeting at the same time. And so we had various members that really expressed concerns over removing the cultural resources references and environmental justice and there were quite a few comments to that. And so OTAC said, you know, I think I understand what we need to do here. And so then Christina went back and then basically rewrote the goals and policies, you know, to to kind of meld in her mind, I think she was melding what we had discussed at the Planning Commission and what was discussed at the CPAT meeting. And she tried to meld the two conversations into new goals and policies which we brought back on June sixteenth and then it just created a ton of confusion. So I asked them to put together something that could explain what their thought process was around that, which they provided to me on July fifteenth, which was too late for me to get in the last Planning Commission packet materials. So that's kind of where we left off. So I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the crosswalk. I was struggling a little bit to follow it. So, but I put it in because I thought, well, I'll let you all look to see how they've tried to address that.
So let's, i- if, if I may.
Yes, yeah, please.
So at the end of May nineteenth, I thought we were done. I think a lot of us did. That's why June second, we were kind of puzzled. And when we started refining on June second, and I think there's some good refinements there, the thing that was highlighted a lot at CPAP was that we didn't want the cultural thing there. And in fact, that's not how the whole meeting went. We had the cultural thing there. What we objected to was the seed bank that the city would be on the hook for having a seed bank. And we says, no, let's, you know, let's move that aside because that doesn't make sense. And for whatever reason, after that CPAP thing, they threw everything that we did the previous two meetings out the door on June sixteen. In other words, that was goal number one, either on May nineteenth or June second. You know, after four hours talking about it, I thought we really nailed it. So I actually think, you know, if you want all those stuff, we may want to start with May nineteenth and just take a look at what we talked about on June second. And I think your crosswalk will cover that. And just, and just tie that together. And we keep the cultural thing without the seed bank. We can keep that in there because, and we keep the justice thing in there. I mean, we don't need to, I mean, we went through the whole thing, you know, I thought we were done. I mean, OTAC from my perspective chewed up two meetings just to book ours. That, that's, that was my, you know, take it for what it's worth. That was my perception.
Yeah, I, I, I think I was gonna say the, the bottom line is we, we left June second with a version that had this Planning Commission stamp on it and that essentially there was consensus in general across the board on that product. So like, I would submit, like, we don't necessarily need to even go back to the main, to May nineteen. The Jan, the June second version, June second version, you know, was what we had. Now, I think the feedback from CPAT, oh, and the other thing I would say is like, it's not like we wholesale discounted environmental justice at all. Environmental justice was reflected in the June second version that we were happy with. So I, I wouldn't concede that point, but we got this feedback from CPAT. They are a stakeholder group. And so I would submit, maybe we use the June second version if that's, I, I, I think we have both the nineteenth, the second, and then the crosswalk. Is that how you have the packet?
Well, yes, but I've also included the CPAT materials that were dated June third in your packet. And that, those materials with those draft goals and policies basically were what came out of the June, the May nineteenth and June second meeting. So I would almost suggest that we use those materials because that's, that's what combined the two meeting discussions that they took to CPAT.
So that's like starting page twenty-six, right? That's the like output of the initial May meeting plus the markups that we also see in this packet, which equal what starts on page twenty-six. That's the
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Can I ask a clarifying question before we dive in on this? The CPAT and us, like, what is the relationship? Are we meant to take their comments under advisory or?
That's my understanding that they're an advisory committee that's weighing in. So I think we take their, their comments and their, yeah, I mean, but I think you ultimately have the say on what you want to recommend.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I didn't understand the course of meetings that was going to occur, but I also felt like what, what we had determined on June second was like we were pretty much all on the same page. And that just, you know, got completely wiped out and redrafted.
Yes.
So I, I, I agree with the starting, I just want to make sure I understand. I want to acknowledge the comments that they gave, but not in a wholesale way that it was done.
Yes, which I think the crosswalk was supposed to walk through and explain that.
Yeah, page forty-four.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, on, on CPAT, I, I would just highlight, like, there's, you know, there's no like statutory requirement or anything to have them. I think it was like a best practice that OTAC embraced, you know, to make sure like a wide range of voices in the community were part of this process, even though at the end of the day, it's our responsibility to identify these goals and policies and make that recommendation to the council.
Okay, okay.
So this is where the crosswalk may come in a little handy just to look at the look on page twenty-six of your packet at the draft goals and policies that were submitted to CPAT, which is, which is what you kind of landed on at the June second meeting. And then the, the crosswalk kind of goes through those goals and policies and then shows how they revised the goal. For example, goal one was enhance emergency preparedness, response and recovery efforts to mitigate risks and impacts associated with wildlife. Or I'm sorry, wildfire, I should have brought my reading glasses, flooding, extreme weather and other hazards worsened by climate change. And then they changed goal one to say reduce harm to people, property and infrastructure from natural hazards intensified by climate change. Include, thank you, including wildfire, flooding, extreme heat and severe storms. And then they provided a rationale for that by saying additional specificity was added to the goal language by describing the desired outcome, reducing harm and hazards for focus wildfire, flooding, extreme heat and severe storms. But to me, those are still reading quite differently in a way.
Yeah, I, I think, can I?
Please, please, it is open.
I, I just, I just can't through there. Goal one, uh, is really what, what I had a thorn in my side on was if you look at it, we all said goal one, one through six retain. Looks like CPAP said retain. There was no reason to mess with that. I, I thought it was really clean about emergency preparedness response, recovery exits to mitigate risks and impact, extreme weather, and I, I don't think there was any reason to touch goal one. And since we went through it twice, we did it in May and then in June second. And CPAP had no issue with goal one, policy one through six. I'd rather just checkmark that and move on.
Yeah, yeah, so that's a really good point. Like, maybe our lens tonight should be to just go through their cross, crosswalk for all items where the two recommendations don't agree.
Between us and CPAT.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
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 Okay.
And it looks like goal one, which I really liked, the six policies there. You know, I don't, I don't know why OTAC decided to change it. And that one looks clean and CPAP had no problem with it.
Pull the crosswalk up here.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
So would it be, yes, I was gonna ask you, like, would it be helpful to have that pulled up?
So we're on thirty-six in the packet.
Hold on, I thought I had opened just the crosswalk. Okay, let me stop sharing.
That's so interesting.
Wow.
Oh, jeez. That we retained, they retained, and then everything got rewritten.
Well, yeah, and OTAC said, no, no, and, and it got rewritten almost unrecognizable. Emergency services out.
Yeah, so I mean, uh, it looks like the good thing is, uh, the first conflict doesn't occur until page forty-seven for, for goal three. Unless someone
Well, I would say though that even when they both say retain, there's like still some pretty significant changes or just like they elaborate in ways we didn't, you know, so I think it's probably worth going through where we where it says retain, retain because like just to take a quick look at what they have. It's because it's, it, there's, it's, I don't know, unless like the output of this is from CPAT or is the output from OTAC? Or is it OTAC's interpretation of CPAT? And that's where I'm, I guess I'm not quite clear in terms of where this is coming from. Because if it's coming from our community, let's give it a look and make sure it's right or, or whatever.
For example, where it says goal three, where we said delete it and CPAP said retain, we should take a look at, that's what you're saying, right?
No, no.
No, I think he's saying the comments that are basically, there's that, that gray bar.
Yeah, like
on the right of that are, I interpret those as OTAC.
That's what I, okay. That, that's, I guess my question is, is that like kind of their editorializing or is it, or is it, are they kind of pulling in output from CPAT into that like far right section? If it's the latter, I'd want us to like take a, take a look. Yeah.
Memory challenge.
Yeah, you know, Director Davis.
Well, the, the CPAT discussion is in the third column where they're telling, where, you know, they're saying it was retained or consolidated or it's the June
Oh, on the rationale notes. On the rationale notes column, you're, you're saying?
Well, I'm
So like, for example, just to make it concrete, we looked at goal one, right? And we said, well, it's, it's completely different on the six sixteen version. Okay, so Commissioner Murphy is saying, well, we would, under the proposal, we see retain, retain, so we could just skip it and move down to where there's conflict. Unless that changed version of reduce harm to people and, and so on and so forth directly came from, from CPAT rather than being, you know, written by, by OTAC.
That's a good question.
I have a question. Are the CPAT meetings recorded?
No.
Cool.
Yeah. Yes, I was thinking that would have been helpful after this most recent one.
So Director Davis, do you recall the, as we go through the goals roughly, CPATs? I mean, if it says retained and we see these comments are different in the six sixteen version.
Yeah, see, that's where I was getting lost because my notes weren't. I mean, if it were to retain all of them, then you wouldn't have seen a different version on June sixteenth. Which is why when I read through this crosswalk, I'm like, I don't feel like this is completely accurate. But I didn't want to have OTAC spend more time on it. I've just figured we would.
That we, we did several exercises in frustration with OTAC. And so I don't want to give too much weight to what they produced for six sixteen because they, we did the same meeting twice with them. And then
On May nineteenth and June second.
Yeah, with two different people.
Right.
Then they just threw all of that out and rewrote everything to what we were told was CPAT, but now we're looking at this and so.
Yeah, that's why I thought to use the CPAT goals and policies though is the most consistent with what we talked about in the June second meeting.
Do you have your notes from the CPAT meeting?
Yes, I did. I, I, I do have them, but then I went through and looked at them and that I found that they weren't super helpful, other than I was making notes like, you know, don't remove references to cultural resources or what was the other?
I just wonder if we don't take June second and re-meet with CPAT and say, can you
We, we would have to lead that because OTAC wouldn't
Yeah.
I mean, I don't see the benefit of having OTAC involved. I don't know about anybody else, but it's created nothing but confusion.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it would delay
I mean, we could try to have another meeting with the CPAT crew. I could schedule that.
Just to make sure that we understand properly what they were trying to communicate that then went through, you know, a unusual cipher code back to us.
Yeah.
We could, we could try to do everything that they asked and completely upset all those stakeholders by not understanding. I think it's worth measuring twice and cutting once.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I mean, my read on this is like the C, listen, I, I think to your point, let's double check. But my read is that the CPAT feedback is all this stuff in the right-hand columns, right? Even when it says retain, because they had issues around some of the environmental justice and the, the, the cultural issues and that's like elaborated, you know, a little more so, kind of more so than we did. But to your point, I think it's important that we make sure that the the stakeholder group feels heard and that we've adequately, we adequately understand what they want. And I think like looking at this, I kind of understand, but not really. And I think I'd rather, I'd rather us like get it right and make sure that like we're incorporating that feedback appropriately and not just like, oh, well, we don't understand this memo, so like just like forget it. I don't want us to do that either, so.
Or rubber stamp what got handed back to us, which might not be a proper representation of what they said.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I was under the impression that the six sixteen version was primarily OTAC, that somehow and they kept talking about that cultural resources thing.
And environmental
Yeah, and environmental justice. When they heard from CPAT the strong objections to those two issues, that they go, I'm just gonna rewrite this thing. And, and, and that's what they did. I mean, so they ignored the retain, retain thing. So I, I'm viewing the stuff on the right as OTAC. It is worth making sure. But, um, yeah, I, again, I look at goal one and went through six as written. And I don't, I'm, I'm still looking. I don't see that we add much value with that stuff on the right.
I guess would it make sense and, and Director Davis, let us know if this is appropriate or not, but earmark a future Planning Commission meeting where we go back, we present, like, we walk through the six-two version and we get some, or, you know, have an, an opportunity for CPAT to meet in a working session here or there's a different be, convening for that, maybe a CPAT meeting. So we can just get it right. And I think like having, you know, I feel like that middle man, that middle person was challenging, right, to go through there. Well, how about we either invite them here or we attend their meeting, or as much of us, as many as bus, as can.
I think I read in their minutes, that was their last meeting though.
Oh, they disbanded.
So I'm, I'm sure it's possible to get them together. What I would say is a plan where we have essentially like a working Planning Commission meeting won't work, right? Because essentially that's public comment. It just, I just don't know if we'd be legally within the bounds or whatever. And so I would recommend probably two. Two, I guess that's as much as we can afford. Two commissioners meet with whoever is willing and able to meet from the original group, so there's not a quorum. It's not an official Planning Commission.
When do we quorum?
Uh, three.
Oh, is it three?
Well.
Four.
So that was a question we didn't get answered, right? Is it based off of six or is it based off of seven?
Because, yeah, one of them's vacant. Yeah, it might be three. It might be.
Right.
Is it a percentage?
I think fifty, fifty.
I think it's the majority. So if you're at six, is three enough?
Okay. Well, we shouldn't play with fire.
But I think regardless, like, I think two commissioners would be enough to receive properly.
Yeah.
And come back and have the right discussion here. And I, I think we had enough time on this, on the climate element to like still meet the timeline and still do our due diligence here, if, if I'm right.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so then next steps would be to reach out, schedule that with the group. You know, I'm happy to attend. I don't know if anyone else has a particular interest. Commissioner Murphy, okay?
Okay.
I'd like to, but I wasn't in the, the earlier meeting, so I don't really have the reference point for it, so.
Okay, okay. Anyone else super interested?
No, I don't.
I'm, I'm interested, but I don't want to go.
Okay.
I mean, I feel very happy with this representation. Full trust and support.
Okay, so yeah, I guess Commissioner, Commissioner Murphy and me.
So just one thing, um, and I, I agree that we just talked about, can we still just buzz through this and look at where we said retain, they said delete, and they said delete. Can we look at the areas that we know for sure from June second, they disagreed with and just, just see what, what's there? Could we at least look at those?
Yeah.
In this meeting?
Yeah, so let's start at goal three.
Can I say something really quick?
Yeah.
I'm the one who said that we should have this meeting. I'll be the backup for either of you. Okay.
I might get, I might get sick.
You might.
I'll be ready.
Standing on my toes.
Sounds great. Okay, so we'd like to go back and look at where we have disagreement between the Planning Commission discussion on six-two column and the CPAT discussion on six-five column. And so let me know if I missed it. But I think that takes us down to goal three on page forty-seven.
We're not counting renumerating?
Yeah, I, I, unless someone feel, unless y'all feel differently, I, I, I think we're okay.
See what the flat disagreements are.
Okay, yeah, so.
So is it goal three?
Goal three, yeah, which was ensure the protection, recovery and adaptation of ecosystems, including streams, riparian zones, wetlands and floodplains to provide healthy habitats and watersheds in a clim- in a changing climate. And so we said to delete, uh, now, it's important to note the policies, so actually, do we want to go through the policies before we? Yeah, yeah, go for it. Uh, Commissioner Murphy?
What was I gonna say? The the reason that um, we said delete was that it was totally covered in the watershed and the river, that it was already covered multiple times. Yeah, yeah, we didn't think it also needed to be included in the climate. We thought it, you know, better to, you know, to focus the climate on specific stuff that wasn't covered elsewhere.
Yeah, yeah, I do I do remember like the overarching approach or whatever that we took was like, we wanted actionable goals that like delivered like tangible results when it ca- when it came to climate and and emissions for this community. So um, okay, that makes sense.
And the direction we were given was to reduce how many of these we had, because we were gonna get measured against them too.
Yeah, and and so like, when we look at the policies that were uh, part of goal three, we see it looks like so obviously we said delete and they said retain every single one of them, it looks like. Yes, so retain every single one of them, and then let's look at rewrites.
And look at, look at three-five, for instance.
Yeah.
Review and update critical areas ordinance to address climate change. Well, we're gonna, we're doing that anyway. I mean, I mean, there's, there's nothing to put in climate change there because there's a whole critical areas ordinance that we discussed. We're gonna review. Looks like we're gonna reevaluate it. And yeah, the whole point was um, no need to, the idea was don't duplicate.
Well, and then it's interesting, right? Cause if we go over and look at the rationale for retaining, I'm not sure it actually supports retaining.
Which page, I'm sorry, which page are you?
Yeah, so we're currently on forty-eight.
Yeah, forty-eight.
Oh, so I, should I stop sharing the crosswalk and get?
In the crosswalk, we're just on.
Just scroll down.
Scroll down to policy three point five.
Cause I'm on goal three here.
Yeah, it's the next page.
Scroll down to policy three point five.
No.
Yeah.
It is fuzzy, even if, even with my glasses.
It's just the large screen.
Yeah.
This is a really hard document to share.
It's pixelated, yeah.
So it says, review and update critical areas ordinance to address climate change. And we're saying, we're, we've got a pretty strong critical areas ordinance. We're going to, it looks like, reevaluate it, update it anyway. Um, why do, why duplicate it in climate change? That was the rationale.
Yeah.
It wasn't that we don't agree it should be done, we just think it's already being done.
I know. It must look like monsters when it says delete next to that stuff.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I I think, I think it was not representative of CPAT without, without, without the chair being there, yeah.
Well, and then the rationale for retaining, I don't think, I don't think like goes against that or mitigates against our our rationale, right? The the critical areas ordinance is separately updated to address best available science, yes. At a policy level, incorporating climate change science into the critical areas ordinance is appropriate. We all agree on that. The specific, the list of specific items to update will be described in the implementation strategy. So like, really, there's no disagreement. Um, such, such that we cannot go ahead and delete three point five.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing.
Cause we covered, yeah. Okay.
And that that part I don't think was represented well.
Yeah.
And then uh.
But this, these, okay, I'm sorry, I need to catch up with where you are all at, cause I feel like I'm missing.
Sure.
So I'm looking at this crosswalk three point five, but then I'm also looking at the um, this materials that were prepared for the CPAT meeting on June third. And when I look at those goals and policies, goal number three, that, none of this is coinciding with that.
Was that? Pre.
Who 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 put that together for CPAT?
So that was OTAC.
Yeah, I know.
So I'm looking at the goal three is ensure that public and private development, redevelopment, infrastructure and facilities projects are resilient to climate change. And then there's seven policies listed under that. So I'm not following, that's where I was struggling with the crosswalk.
I can see why.
I'm not following this policy three point five doesn't really have anything to do with what we presented to CPAT.
Can we just also back up to the fact that like, I think we need to go back to data points that we controlled? Because what flowed through OTAC did not come back clean. So June second meeting, we have that captured. I I I just don't put a lot of weight in anything after that.
Yeah, i- if if OTAC didn't um, present the the goal three that we said delete as, you know, faithfully, then it's no wonder that feedback got so skewed. It's almost like they switched cities or something. I mean, it's something that really went awry in the translation, what we were doing from OTAC to CPAT and back to us.
Right.
Anyway, um.
So I don't know.
That's unquestioned, that whole, everything on the right then, everything on six sixteen. Well, I still think it's a good idea that we go through this and we brief CPAT on what we think is the right thing, because there's been miscommunication and see what, just make sure that like you said, we measure twice, cut once.
But actually, I'm I'm trying to like detective and sleuth this together. It looks as though like our like version that we aligned on starts on page twenty-six, page twenty-seven, which has goal three that uh, Director Davis just discussed on private development. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine. However, when you get to the crosswalk, the like far-left column reflects the original like version that we marked up and changed many times since then. So it's not a, it's not really a useful
No.
examination of like what's happened. So I'd almost, I I actually think probably looking further at the crosswalk is probably not useful.
That's what I mean.
Because it doesn't really, this like, all the, this goal one and the text isn't the like latest and greatest. It's not what was on page twenty.
What'd you say, twenty-six?
Twenty-six, that's like.
Twenty-seven.
This is like, yeah, page twenty-six is like, that's our, that's where we left it.
It's referencing what starts on page eight, right?
Yeah, from the very, very beginning, before we started doing anything.
Yeah.
So these goals and policies that are up here now, that I'm sharing on my screen, I believe were where we landed after the first two meetings.
Yeah.
And this was, these were the goals and policies that after the June second meeting, we took to the CPAT group.
And got rewritten.
And then these got rewritten.
Yeah. So twenties, page twenty-six onward represents what this planning commission was.
In alignment with.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because I, goal two was unique to us. I remember pulling the local economy up there is goal two.
Yeah.
So I'd almost say like it might be kind of fruitless to like keep parsing through some of this stuff here. I think probably the next most reasonable step is to get that meeting with CPAT. Two of us come together with what's on page twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. This is like where we landed and almost like received their feedback once again. And then we incorporated at our, at a future meeting and we move on.
Except, except.
Except, oh no.
Well, these goals, um, there there's gonna say, where was, where'd the cultural um, thing go, right? And that would be in the crosswalk.
No, I mean, four point one. Create and implement culturally contextualized outreach and education initiatives and materials that will inform the community about near-term and longer-term climate change threats and build resilience. Four point two, build and support partnership with community-based organizations. So there's. And the important thing to remember uh, is going back to um, the the Washington law, you know, that that uh, puts in place this this requirement. Um, the requirement was that a, in a, in a climate element of a comprehensive plan address environmental justice. It's pretty, pretty broad. Address environmental justice.
You're right.
Not address, you know, cultural needs, wants, desires, but environmental justice, which is fair, right? And we do.
Okay.
And to be fair, we do have a good amount of um, space in here for tribal outreach for some of the like rep, meeting with tribal representatives as it relates to like resiliency of the economy, things like that, looking broader. So I think like there was this impress, uh, uh, um, false, I guess, impression that like we were discounting those concerns or not taking them into account when actually they're here. And I think they're like very thoughtful, so I think.
Let's go back to June second.
Let's go back to. Page twenty-six, whatever the date that is. Um, I think that's what we take back to CPAT and get their feedback and move forward.
I like it, I like it. Just one comment, uh, if you go to the greenhouse gas emissions, cause I remember Chair brought this up a couple of times, and you roll down to, I think it's four point three. Require all city-owned buildings to powerfully, uh, there there were a couple, there there was one or two, do you remember Chair?
Yeah, I do.
They were kind of brutal. There just one or two that needed to be tweaked on that one, I thought.
I asked OTAC specifically because we gave very specific feedback on four point three. And like it didn't change.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it actually got more stringent, actually, I think. Um, because like powered one hundred percent by renewable energy by twenty twenty-nine. And then Commissioner Lambert, you know, rightly pointed out like, we don't control the energy mix of um, Puget Sound Energy. Right?
Yeah.
City doesn't control that.
So so if, if you look on page forty-three, there's a note that says, PC Planning Commission recommended eliminating this policy on six sixteen. So it's memorialized in that way, but obviously.
But not truly active.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good lord.
Yeah.
This is fun, isn't it?
You you could just say encourage city-owned buildings to be powered by.
That's what we changed.
We, there was a small word choice.
Take out the word completely and and then you're, you're done.
Yeah.
And then then I think we've got something that's pretty solid.
And we were pretty happy in general with greenhouse gas emissions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the state still has something like eighty-five or ninety percent renewables, uh, due to hydro.
For our grid, yeah, yeah.
And uh, you know, Commissioner Lambert could chime in, but I think we're gonna have to add some electrical use, right, electrical generation power, but right now.
Oh, that, okay, thank you. You reminded me. So when I asked about that, of why it wasn't changed, whatever, that their feedback was, well, the city could um, take part in the uh, programs where they, they buy solar. They buy their sourcing to be one hundred percent solar, one hundred percent other renewables via the programs that PSE has, which Commissioner Lambert provided some perspective on that. I think Commissioner Murphy talked about as well. Um, so that was, that was their reason, their rationale for like, no, the city could one hundred percent achieve sourcing from renewables. Despite not controlling the mix.
Yep. I just think we toned down four point three, like we.
For sure.
Yeah.
I have my notes here where I circled required and put a no.
Yeah.
But I don't know if we came up with another word there, but I could certainly change that before we meet with the.
I think it was encouraged.
Say encourage and take out the word completely. Require to encourage and just delete completely. Encourage all city-owned buildings to be powered by renewable energy.
Yeah.
And and you're, then you're good.
So encourage, take out required.
And 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 then eliminate the word completely.
Completely encourage.
Well, I mean, I mean, you you can't go all or nothing, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Just unnecessary language.
Encourage all city-owned buildings to be powered by renewable energy.
Yep.
By twenty twenty-nine, perfect.
Okay, any other comments, thoughts or otherwise? Okay, so then the um, action plan going forward is to reach out to the CPAT members, determine their availability, align on a date to meet, have that meeting with Commissioner Murphy and me. Um, with Vice Chair Kilkup as a backup, we'll get their feedback uh, based off of the June second version that came out of here, starting on page twenty-six. And then uh, record that, bring that back to an appropriate planning commission session and move on this item.
And timeline-wise, we submitted what we needed to to the state, so we're not under any extreme crunch anymore, right?
No, I mean, it would be nice to get the climate element draft put into the comp plan as a comp plan amendment. Um, but if we, i- i- if it doesn't happen, I mean, we were supposed to have it all completed and we ran out of time with the grant. And so I need to get the critical areas ordinance completed because that was part of the climate grant. And then at some point, we need to issue CIPA, which would be a non-project action. Um, do a public hearing recommendation to the council. So if it doesn't happen this year, I don't think it's, that's a huge thing, but it would be nice to get it amended, get the comp plan amendment amended. But then bear in mind that we also have the zoning map to amend, so there's some comp plan work that needs to be done based on the growth target reconciliations that we're in the process of doing. And so there's a little bit of work that we need to go through and clean up the comp plan.
Do we have those listed?
Uh, like those items and like?
Yeah.
No, like, like the calendar views we used to have?
Uh, no, no, like the, what items from the comp plan need revisiting and and updating?
Well, I think high level right now, we just want to focus on the zoning map because we've got the whole Stone Quamie Ridge Zone Mixed Use. And that's a built-out development now. That's a master plan development that's mostly built out. So we should be creating new zones up there that would be more in line with what's actually built there. So your single-family residential plats, for example, probably shouldn't be zoned mixed use. They should be zoned, single-family, with how many ever units per acre those lots meet, you know, density-wise. Um, you know, your business park probably shouldn't be zoned mixed use because there's no residential in it. So we should kind of come up with a business park zone and, you know, so we just need to go in and analyze all the areas of the Stone Quamie Ridge development and then re-zone it to what's actually built there.
Will that also like weave in, I think you may have alluded to this, but is that also weave into the the different housing targets that the city is on the hook to deliver vis a vis the county? Is that like the same exercise?
Sort of, so um, the Department of Commerce has tasked every city with determining properties within your city limits that would support, like permanent supportive housing, for example. And so you have to show on your zoning maps where you can accommodate that housing. The city doesn't have to provide it, but like, as you know, we have a, we have a vacant lot up on the ridge that we've been trying to figure out how to get an affordable housing unit in there. Um, but then, you know, that's, that's a whole nother, you know, that's a whole nother issue because it's hard to build that low-income housing without subsidies. And so that's just something that we have to, we'll have to look at. But we've gotta at least designate on our zoning map where that affordable housing could go in our city so that we represent that we've accommodated for that. So that is part of that discussion. Let me ask you this really quick while we're on the topic of scheduling a meeting. Are you available the last week in August? If we were to try to schedule, I know that we've taken a recess, but if I just, I'm trying to get some dates on the calendar.
What do we mean recess? We're not meeting August eighteen?
Yes, we're not, yes, there's no commission, council, any committee meetings the second half of the month. So I bet I, if you're around, I could try to see if the CPAT group would be available the end of August or maybe the second week in September, if that's easier, just to give some options for people.
I'm, I'm around.
Uh, I'm not, um, the second week in September would be better.
Second week in September, okay.
Same here. Second week September would be better. Second week September would be better for me, too.
Okay.
Good.
Yep, that's all good.
Good deal. Um, so, uh, that closes out old business for now. Uh, we have council liaison report. Um, Councilmember Johnson had an engagement, so he wasn't able to come. We don't have his email as part of the record. Are you good to speak to it? Okay. So we have an update from him. Uh, the Director Davis will provide.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So, uh, Ca- Councilmember Johnson did send an email to Chair Testman and I this afternoon ahead of the meeting. He apologized for being unable to attend. Um, he said in lieu of a, a liaison update, he asked me to relay to the planning commissioners that you could feel free to ask. Um, I could ask you for questions and then we could relay those on to him. Or you could reach out to him with any questions or concerns and he can follow up at a new meeting. He also asked me to let you know that at the last council meeting, the city adopted a flag policy that will allow the administration to raise the national, state and city flags as well as POW MIA flags. The administration may also raise as appropriate other governmental agency flags, federally recognized sovereign flags, flags related to awards, for example, the Tree City Award. Uh, Mount Si High School, the Pride Flag and the Juneteenth Flag. No other flags are to be flown without a change to the policy, which would be done by the council. So he just wanted me to relay that.
You missed there, uh?
That was a pretty comprehensive flag.
Yeah, it's a pretty comprehensive flag list.
The pirate flag, yeah, yeah, it's still across from you.
Often overlooked.
Jolly Roger, yeah.
Uh, I did have a question on that. I guess like my assumption would have been that like, for example, the national flag was previously allowed to be raised. So like, what changed? I guess is my question.
You know, I was wondering the same thing. And I think, I'm not sure that anything really changed. I think we just needed to have a policy.
Oh, like there wasn't a policy at all?
Then a policy. So I think it was just a matter of creating a policy that was very clear because then otherwise anybody could come to the city and say, I want, I want to fly my flag. I want you to fly my flag. So.
This is for the city?
Yes.
To fly the flag, right? Cause I'm like, would sports team up? We're not talking about any of that stuff.
Yeah, that, I, I know that came up in the council discussions about the sports teams.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you.
Uh, two things. One is I do want to say thank you so much for the rigorous, uh, problem solving. I did want to chime in. But you guys were doing such a good job and I didn't figure another voice really mattered. Um, and then the other one was I, on the flag thing, I do know for some reason we were like the last city in Washington that allows the flying of the, the pride flag or the Western Washington or something like that. So something did change that allows us to, to fly that flag at least.
Interesting, didn't, didn't I?
I'd heard that as well. I think that was one of the, I, I've fallen into the discussion as well, and that was one of the one of many impetus for that, but you know, with that, we were kind of an outlier and not flying that flag.
Interesting. Thanks, Commissioner Lambert. Um, okay. Anything else as far as council liaison report?
That's all we have from, uh, Councilmember Johnson.
Okay. I'll turn it over to you, Chair Davis, for the department report, yeah.
My report? Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to mention if you are going to be absent, it would be helpful if you could also copy me on the emails in addition to Deana Dean because she's not always coming to the meetings now, and I'm not sure that she will be coming in the future. It sounds like we may have a shift in responsibilities. So I'm not, it, it would just be helpful in the event that Chair Testman is out or something, just to make sure I'm on that as well. Um, for future agendas, so our August eighteenth meeting is canceled. Um, and then I'll be on vacation between August thirteenth and the twentieth. I thought it was timely to take a vacation when there were no meetings. And then I found out that there's a council retreat on August fifteenth that the directors are invited to that I'm apparently going to miss, but that's okay. Uh, we have a regular meeting on September first, but that's Labor Day, so that would bump our meeting to September second on a Tuesday. I'll be out at a conference that week. I've got the Planning Directors Conference, uh, for the Washington State Planning Directors Conference. So it's not to say that I couldn't try to join the meeting remotely, but at this point, I'm not sure exactly what I'd have for an agenda item. Uh, I think that maybe Andrew Love might be ready to bring back the Historic Preservation Code Amendments. Um, but I'm not entirely sure. So I'm a little on the fence if we'll have that meeting or if we'll need to cancel it. So I'm just kind of giving you a heads up. And then as a reminder, there's special training on September fifteenth, and that's the ABCs for the BCCs, if you recall. So hopefully you all have that on your calendar, so we won't have a regular meeting that evening so that we can have this training. Um, as I said, the Critical Areas Ordinance will come back at the regular meeting on October sixth. I'm not sure if we'll need to have a public hearing, but my, my hunch is possibly yes. So we may have to bring the Critical Areas Ordinance discussion back to you on the sixth and then possibly have a public hearing on the twentieth to make a different recommendation.
Pauses, I missed this. Will the evaluation be done by the sixth?
Yes.
Okay, so he's gonna walk around.
He's gonna visit all, yes. He's working on that actively this month.
Okay.
So in fact, he told me, I talked to him this afternoon because I thought he, I went into a little bit of a panic because he'd been away at a conference and then he went on vacation. And we were talking in the middle and I was trying to get him to come to this meeting on the fourth to talk through the Critical Areas Ordinance. But so I called him to make sure he was not coming tonight and he said no, but he had blocked out time in his schedule to go around and visit all the critical areas this week so he could start analyzing that this month. So I think we'll, I think we'll be on track to get that done. Um, the Historic Preservation Code Amendments, um, uh, Andrew Love brought those, I think, was it at the last meeting or was, was it the last meeting? And then he's, I know he's actively working on those now, so he may have those ready for a September second meeting, but worst case, those would also come back on October sixth. And then, um, we have a new planner, Christopher Singh. I think I mentioned that. He started a month ago. And so I gave him the wireless code amendments and asked him to start kind of looking through those so him and I could discuss those. So that's still on our radar. I didn't want you to think that we had forgotten about that. Um, we have had some wireless, uh, companies reach out about where to put additional cell towers in the city. So um, I know there's interest there to do that, so it'd be good to get our wireless code updated. Um, and then as I mentioned, we still have the zoning map updates uh, that we'll need to walk through. And I'm not anticip-, we may be able to get started on that this year, but I'm not anticipating that we would be able to conclude that this year, but that would be for a comp plan amendment likely next year. And then again, we've got the recommendation on the climate element that will need to happen um, for the city council, which would also be considered a comp plan amendment because it would be adding a climate element to the existing comprehensive plan. And then I just wanted to let you know that the final plat of timber trails should be recording soon. That will bring forty-six new lots into the city. Um, that's up by the elementary school. And I'm anticipating that, uh, we probably will be getting building permits in on that, you know, throughout the summer, the rest of the summer, early fall.
Thirty-four single-family lots?
Uh, forty-six.
Oh, forty-six.
So some of them are single-family attached.
Okay.
So there's detached and attached in that mix. They're being built by TriPoint Homes. I don't know if you've been to North Bend, along North Bend Way, but they have a big development going in at Tri, TriPoint Homes has some. And I think they'll look somewhat similar to that. They're very nice. And then, uh, Community Development's participating in two more events this summer. So in addition to Music in the Park last month, we're also going to be at Snow Quamie Days on August twenty-third and then at the International Block Party on September sixth. The Music in the Park was really fun. We really enjoyed that. Just, it's mostly just to connect with people and you know, let them know what we do and what we can help with and that type of thing. Um, I am trying to throw in a little bit of the climate information their way, too, so people are aware that we're working on that. And, um, it's been really fun to kind of engage the kids on some of the different, I found a book on how to talk to kids about climate. And so I've been u- using some of the information and that to just have conversations. It's kind of fun to, to engage with them, so. Anyway.
Block Party is September sixth, you said?
Yes.
Are they gonna shut down? Um, was it King Street? Are they gonna shut down?
No, that's, that's up on the ridge.
Oh, it's only on the ridge, okay.
Yes, and I think it's in Community Park.
Okay.
I've not, I've not been to it before, but I'm, I think the Chamber sponsors that event.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, they shut down Center for.
Oh, Center Boulevard, yeah.
What, what's the date on that one?
Uh, September sixth. It's on a Saturday. And I think that's pretty much all I have to report on right now.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate all your help to commissioners with the goals and policies and we'll get through it. I'm determined.
That's productive day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, and please feel free to reach out to me if there's, like, if you have questions or you wonder what's going on about something. Just feel free to email me and I'll try to remember to check my junk folder more often.
All right. Thank you. Uh, all right, moving on to future agenda topics, items of planning commissioner interest. Vice Chair Kilkup?
Oh, uh, in Community Park, there is a massive tree limb down covering the, who's like Parks and Rec?
Um, yeah, that would be Parks.
Yeah, so there's two things, um, over near there that I just saw. So the, there's a tree limb that broke and is now like blocking the pathway.
Hmm.
Um, which not safe. And then, um, in the skate park, some of the end, like the cap um, area, i- the concrete broke and fell down below. So.
Oh, okay.
Needs to get somebody out there.
That's at the skate park.
Yeah.
Where is the tree limb? Is it in, is it on there? Is there like a, a
picture?
Path or something?
Yeah, okay, I think. How would I describe it?
Is it behind the play structure on the hill?
Yeah, so up higher than the play structure, if you were following around.
Going back towards Curtis?
Right.
That makes sense.
Back towards where?
Curtis Drive.
So that's north, northwest of the playground on the path.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and there's a retention pond. There's a retention pond downhill.
Before you get to that.
Yeah.
Okay, before the retention pond?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the skate park is the caps on the
Yeah.
Rails or something?
Concrete wall comes up and then, I've never paid attention before, right? But there's like these, I think, precast concrete that's sitting on top of it. One of the edges, it broke. And so there's an edge there that I think is rather unsafe because it's right next to like the, I don't know, eight or twelve-foot drop. Someone would lose their balance there.
Okay.
But also the concrete then is kind of broken and scattered about down below.
Okay, I'll send, um, Jeff Hamlin an email tonight before I leave.
Cool.
Did it, did it impact your ability to ollie?
Right. No.
Okay.
Uh, I think that's all I have. Yeah.
Commissioner Muzia? Um, yes, uh, just a, a kudos. I'm not sure who this goes to. But the Business Loop Trail, the one rather than going down Fisher, you go by the retention pond and you're behind the business park. And you follow it and it goes beside the skate rink and whatnot. Um, you know, over the last couple of months, somebody, they worked on it, they widened it. They put up a sign saying the volunteers do it. I mean, that whole bridge, a couple of planks were missing. They fixed that. There were a couple of muddy areas. They completely filled those in and that is just, that's just amazing. And some of that work happened recently. So again, I'm not sure who's doing that, but, um, it, it's, it's extremely nice resource to have, particularly when it's hot out and it's in shades. So I was, I was quite impressed by that. So, um, anyway, kudos on that. And again, there was a sign that said, there's volunteers involved. I think we really should pass on to that because I've never been on the trail. I'm just like, wow, this is, this is really cool. Um, so that's, that's one thing. Um, on a different note, um, there was a whole plan a few years ago to really go after sidewalks that were like all over the place. And they found the worst ones and they started to tackle those. And one of the ones they did was on Ridge, which we, we go around. And it was really interesting. Two years ago, they tackled and they put these brand new in, you know, I suppose they cut roots out and whatnot. But anyway, it's, it's totally a disaster, you know? You got, you know, up and down, I mean, up and down like six inches, really bad. Um, right across from where, where the golf carts go. It, it's just worth taking a look at. So uh, at least in that particular example, what we're doing to fix the sidewalks, um, we're, we're missing something there. And I'm not sure if we didn't get the roots out and go down deep enough, but, um, yeah, I was, I was kind of shocked when I saw that, so.
So these are new sidewalks that were installed to kind of fill in a gap?
Uh, no, no. Basically, you had sidewalks that were, you know, really out of whack. And so they smashed those out, they took those out and they put new ones in, right, to fix those. And that's what they did to smooth it out. A couple of those new ones that are less than two years old are, are moving around again. And they're moving around significantly. And it's, it's again on the Ridge, uh, road, um, where the golf cart trail goes over. I'm not sure what that is.
Like by Cascade?
Yeah, actually, below, down, down from Cascade, down from Cascade, down towards the Eagle Lake.
Eagle Lake.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, if you look, cause, cause we noticed, they smashed it up and had it blocked off. We noticed they put the new sidewalk in, walking around. And then we just noticed on the weekend, it's like, wow, um, something's not working here.
Yeah.
So I just thought I'd highlight that.
Okay, I'll add that to my note to Jeff.
Okay. But again, whoever's doing that trail, a little thumbs up.
Okay. It's nice to deliver a little good news with the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And was that area where the trail improvement, I think a tree had fallen and like, kind of destroyed the, the chain link fence there that separates the parking lot with, um, Snow King. Is that the area you're, you're talking about?
Well, they, um, I, maybe, but I mean, they, they cut the trees out. I mean, you'll go there and you'll see a tree this big where they cut it out.
Yeah.
They laid it beside the trail. I mean, it's, uh, I mean, the work they did there is impressive. So anyway, I recommend if you haven't checked it out, go for it.
Awesome. Uh, Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah, just a couple of plugs. So, um, National Night Out is tomorrow, uh, hosted by the Police Department. So that's gonna be a fun event, a lot of like base painting and stuff for kids. Um, so that could be a good one. Um, Chickadee Bake Shop just reopened or in their new location. I think that was like a week ago, which is like really cool. I was in there today. A lot of great stuff to be had and the ice cream parlors, like new windows just were put in, just as they described it when they were here last time, which is really cool. Um, and then one, just like, I don't know, just for everyone's knowledge, um, we had two, uh, cougar encounters in our Silent Creek neighborhood and both ki- kids encountering cougars both times. So obviously we're guests in their home, um, but we did, um, we had a, a neighbor call Fish and Wildlife and they gave us some good like tips on like what to do and how to behave and how to react, um, if and when you encounter a cougar.
So cougar, not mountain lion or wildcat?
Uh, I believe cougar, yeah.
How, how recently?
Uh, one day and then one last week.
So we had a bobcat yesterday in our backyard. Um, different ballgame than a cougar.
Yeah, yes, these, this was a, yeah, this was a big, big cat.
Um, did you see it?
I did not. No, our next door neighbor's, uh, family, their, their boy saw it. Um, so anyway, um, obviously, you know, we're, we're the guests in their, their habitat. But, um, Fish and Wildlife gave us some good like, or, or community neighborhood, neighbors some good guidance on like how to react, what to do, what not to do, et cetera. So, um.
Like to know what that is.
Yeah.
And don't, don't turn and run.
Right.
Make yourself big.
Okay, so kind of like a bear.
Big and loud.
Yeah, big and loud.
That might be good information to share on our social media. I'll mention that.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so just because it's been two instances in a period of a week. So that, that, the retaining pond, retention pond between Elderberry and, um, Silent Creek and that trail system back there, we think that's where it's living. It's been, been seen there uh, twice over the last week, so.
Hmm, that's kinda scary.
You're making me feel like I need to go on more field trips. Like Elderberry and Silent Creek, I have no idea where that is, but I'll, I'll figure it out.
All good, Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah.
All right. Commissioner Hurley?
Uh, just, um, a, a, another kudos, the, the new tank that's going in next to Eagle Lake uh, down by the golf course. Uh, we live across the lake from it. We've had almost no noise. They've been doing a really good job about trying to keep the trash contained, there's not a lot of slurry going on the street and everything, so they're doing a good job keeping that contained within the the boundaries of the construction zone, so. That's all I've got.
Perfect, sorry, I can jump in with one more. I don't know if folks are seeing this as well, and I'm not sure whose responsibility this is, but there's like a a dumpster in the parking lot behind the Y, between the Y and the splash pad, and it keeps like sliding out into the, like into the um street, into the like right-of-way. And I don't, I thought it was like a remnant from the construction, but it's still there, so I I don't know. You know, I've like personally gone and like wheeled it back like several times, because it was like blocking cars, but like it wasn't, it wasn't a frequent issue during pickup and drop-off at Cascade View, but I've seen it still there like after the construction, so I don't know if that's.
Is it moving into the parking lot between the Y and the splash pad?
It's moving, yeah, it's between, it and it, it's like, kind of like in occupying two parking spaces, I guess that's its home, but it sometimes drifts into like lanes of traffic, so.
Is it the um construction dumpster or is it?
Thought it was, but they've been, the, you know, the construction's been done for quite some time now.
Yeah, it makes me wonder if they didn't pick up that dumpster.
Maybe they didn't pick it up, or I don't know who, I don't think it's the Y's, because I didn't see it there before the uh splash pad construction, so.
I'll find out who owns that and see if we can track that down.
And and you were good, Commissioner Hurley?
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
I've got nothing.
Fair enough.
We miss you tonight, but thanks for joining online.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I could not make it in on time, so I couldn't make it.
Uh the only thing I I had for tonight was thank you to the city for the brochure they sent out on e-bikes. Um and then obviously for the Snoqualmie Police Department's enforcement efforts uh on this, yeah, it is notice. So really thank, and and frankly, I learned a lot from the handout, so. Um hopefully, a lot of people did, um because I think people want to comply, so.
Daryl's raising his hand again.
Commissioner Lambert?
I lied the first time. I have a question. I I don't know if it has much to do with like if we if we can really get an answer, but the the Highway eighteen interchange um situation, when you're heading eastbound on ninety and you want to get off on the ridge, am I cur- like, it can, is there no longer a dedicated lane all the way off the highway to get to Snoqualmie? Anybody else notice that?
Been a lot of discussion on that, and I know if if you check the city's social media page on Facebook, I don't know if it's on our website or not, but um I know the mayor recently had a meeting with Washdawt about some of the issues that are happening out there, um and they've explained it better on there, but I think there are
Okay.
issues with dedicated lanes and yeah, there's, there's definitely some things going on that they're trying to fix.
Okay, that was, that was it.
Thank you. All right, so that concludes uh future agenda items, so I move at eight fifteen that we conclude the planning commission meeting for August fourth. Can I get a second?
Second.
And all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Have a good night. Thanks for joining.